Say then Jimmy Preston, will you?
Father, we thank you. We thank you for the rain, Father, that we needed so much for. We just ask you to be the leaders for our nation, Father, and protect our troops all over the world. We ask you to be with our mayor and our council on that, Father. We always make the right decisions for everyone. Father, bless us, we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
We'll start with the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Members present for meeting were Mayor, County Director, Chris Gillen, James Logan, James Preston, and Heath Headley. The mayor called a call and present called a meeting to order. The minutes from the last meeting were read. James Preston made a motion to approve as read. Chris Gillen said, "All yes." James Logan made a motion... Hold on, I skipped one. The minutes from the special call meeting were read. James Preston approved the minutes as read. James Logan said, "All yes." James Logan made a motion for immediate consideration for freedom, fiber easement. James Preston seconded motion, "All yes." James Logan made a motion for the freedom fiber easement. Heath Headley seconded motion, "All yes." Chris Gillen made a motion to pay the bills as listed on each account. James Preston seconded, "All yes." James Logan stated the fire department is needing several new items for the fire department. The tanker needs a new transfer pump that will cost around $6,700. It also needs toolboxes for it. They will cost around $500 for both sides. Fire department needs two sets of turnout gear. This will cost around $2,600 per set. New boots around $200, helmets around $100 to $150. A deep freeze for the fire department around $300 to $400. This money can come out of the fire department donation account. They will also need other small items. Chris Gillen made a motion for immediate consideration to purchase the items listed above for the fire department. These items will come out of the two fire department accounts. James Preston seconded motion, "All in favor," except James Logan abstained. Chris Gillen made a motion to purchase the items listed for the above, for the fire department account. These items will come out of the two fire department accounts. James Preston seconded motion, "All in favor," except James Logan abstaining. Jimmy Preston made a motion to pull from the line of credit. James Logan seconded motion, "All in yes." James Preston made a motion to adjourn. Chris Gillen seconded motion, "All in yes."
Make a motion to accept, the members is ready. One second.
All in favor? Alright. Next on the agenda will be the town balances for the town.
I was like, "I have the water department because I was having trouble with one of them." I bet I will. I didn't see the deal. I didn't see that.
I won't. Alright. Is that anything?
No, there was some... It was six, it was over six, but I know it was six. But it was...
Does she need to go get that back? Starting with the town Bear Creek general funds account. Available funds in the checking account is $8,401.24. The park and rec available funds in that checking account is $5,418.28. The town Bear Creek Police and Fire Fund available funds is $2,803.13. Available funds in the municipal share account is $2,737.96. The available funds in the municipal court account is $7,251.21. Available funds for the fire department tax account is $6,690.47. Available funds for the Bear Creek Fire Department checking account is $16,860.75. Available funds in the street and road repair checking account is $3,582.98. Available funds in the street and repair checking account is $7,182.83. Available funds for the Twin Forks campground is $3,219.19. Available funds for the Bear Creek rental account is $8,735.90. Available funds for the police officers fund checking account is $376.20. Available funds for the town of Bear Creek savings account is $5,274.28. Available funds for the Bear Creek Fire Department three mill tax account is $32,564.57. And the available balance in the checking account for the water department is approximately $16,000. Next on the agenda is the bills that are due. The town bills would be $14,303.39. And does that catch it? I mean, is that for the... Up this far, brought up, okay?
No, they don't have to pay all of that because half of the insurance comes from the water department.
For that shift, yeah, the 4,400, that's what the water department will pay half of that.
And then down there on the power, at the bottom, there's two different powers. I recently found out that the street lights can come out of the street and road account. That it can pay for street lights every month. So that means they have that.
That's a good chunk of it. You know, I mean, for the year. So if you look at that, for the street, okay, that's just the street repair. The street and road balance was $3,592.98. So that's what's in that account that can help with paying the town.
I was also going to take the street repair account. Needs to reimburse the street and road account about $2,500 for paying for the culverts. That guy, not the culverts. The mix, the road mix stuff that you pay the roads with, that repaired.
Pay dollars.
Okay. The street repair account is... Yes, that's the four cent account. The street and road repair account is a seven cent tax account. He said that reimbursed from the street account to the street and road account, the $2,500 that we paid for the plant mix. Because that, the plant mix should have come out of the street because that's what it's for, is the street. He said reimburse that. And the street and road repair account can pay for the street lights every month.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine.
That was good.
It's all this, all this, like, money, it hurts our hearts. Something, you know, another service. I mean, that's what the meeting before getting most of it.
Well, I knew that there's two different towns, one he's paid, one he's repaired. And I have it was clear on this, which was which. Who wasn't told you?
He should have watched on the new county.
The county.
I go by what he said. I'm sure he's better first.
Well, he was looking over everything and then he said, "Well, here's where I see you can... This is what you do with these two accounts." He actually said, "If he's going to get rid of me more, probably need to rename one of those accounts. That way we don't get confused on it." Because it's street repair and street and road repair. He said one's four cent, one's seven cent. The seven cent can pay for street lights. He said it should have been paid for that all alone. You've used after that account. And when you repair the roads with the millet, I guess that's what that's called, take it out of that account. That's what he said. So I thought that was pretty good because that's $900 a month just that we pay for street lights.
Right. Your account's good, but I'm sure it's good too.
Okay, so the total on those bills was $14,303.39. The campground bills is $6,674.26. And that will also include the last payment on the building.
Now, I have a question about that. Since it's that building and it was done to better the campground, can that last payment come out of that municipal shares account? Because that's where I'm afraid.
I don't think so because, I mean, one of the issues running with the municipal shares is, you sort of talk about that before you spend the money most of the time. You know, something before the, before the council and y'all decide to use the municipal shares.
To pay for all, per se, instead of just...
Yeah, I mean, it can be useful for capital improvements, but I would say, no, don't use that money unless it's something y'all bothering on the board.
Okay, next, the bills that are due. For the police department is $4,887.56. The park and rec, what's due is $676.85. Fire department, $618.61. The water department, $42,108.69. That also includes the end of the month, the $24,799.50. And then the garbage and will that, have that all come up with?
Garbage? But now, what do you still have? About $24,000 plus dollars that's still owed to the water department in the next weekend? Because it's 313 accounts that's still owed as of this evening when I left.
And we have possibly $16,000 there, so...
Plus today's deposit. Today's deposit's over $4,000. That's kind of a deposit. So, because there's nothing to update, everything's still the same.
Okay. Alright, so that's the bills. Then that should give us through to the end of the line of credit.
But now, the insurance is for the first of the next month, so that's the payment interest, that IP of this.
So that's with November?
Yes.
So that includes, that's one of those is just...
That's one of those for April end.
Okay.
This you will look into first?
Yes. We wouldn't have another account for that.
Right.
So that includes that payment. Everybody's got it.
I make a motion for that bill. One second.
All in favor? Next, we'll get an update on all the departments. Start with Andrew.
I want to make this, you know, I want to make this, trying to get with Dale and get some more coal patch for our roads. We think we fixed 27, what we had. We talked with Brad White today or yesterday about the street light over on 65. We been looking at that. Before you get to Pounder's driveway, it's wanted to be on the, be on the right side of the road. It's up in the people's yard. It's not working long time, but it's grown up. And the Flemings asked if we could get it fixed because it's what used to have their driveway. Me and Brad looked at it and it's not been cut like it's supposed to be. So it's really grown up. So he talked, he called into the engineer, made moving it, I think it's two power posts down. But it don't have a 120 voltage thing there, a secondary. So he's getting with him, getting with him to see how much wire it would cost to move that light from this pole to this pole over here. And then they'll get that light back working. Hadn't been working anyways, but we're paying for it. So, I mean, him got, me and him looked at it and we tried to use a high level stroke and we had it to cut it out. But you're talking huge trees that you can't, and you're dealing with someone else's property because it's up in their front yard. So, no one was there to talk to them the day I was going to do it. So, kind of just backed up the punt and then me and Brad talked today. We got a transformer on the back field that started smoking today. We got no power to that back cedar shed back there. And when you cut power back onto it, we found a breaker trip. We thought it just maybe something got into it. Well, when we cut it back on, it started shooting flames out of the transformer. We killed it again, I called Brad, that's what I talked to him today about that. He's supposed to come back to tomorrow and look at it. But he let me know that was our transformer back there. But there's no power on that, that back session stand right now. So tomorrow we're going to pull that cover off that breaker box and go in there and make sure some kind of animal got in there, maybe. There's power on the stick, but when we click our power to it, it starts like backfeeding it. So Brad, so Brad's supposed to give me tomorrow on that. So, cleaned out the gutters down this building, had trees growing in it, so other than that, just...
And you've got the furnace, everything?
Well, we, what we found out today, when I come in today, someone had that one on like 64. I think when Michelle, Melissa come in and cleaned, that was on 64. That was on like 73, so this here was...
They turned them off, Melissa, when he left.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm saying that you still see the set, you know, I mean, the set of them to come on that.
You're going to get the covers with the...
Ordered them today, you know, had a Glasgow heat and air come out today and check it. What we thought might have been low, you and they put some dye and find it. It wasn't low, but I talked to Eric, he said more likely when they set that like that and it just worked that twice hard and froze it up. But they did find it, while the water came out, the pump in there was stocked up with this trash light. So they back flushed that, cleaned that. We found two filters in there that no one ever, that wasn't supposed, but you didn't know it was in it. We took them out today and cleaned them and fixed them. So hopefully we won't have any more trouble out of it, maybe. But, you know, we can talk to them. They asked about getting all of our AC units on a monthly service check. It's like for the first unit, it's like $150. And every unit you get behind that, it's like, this one here that has three on it, so like $150. And then the next one be like $100 and the next one be like 75 maybe, something like that. Step them down and give you a break.
Is that permanent?
That's, yeah, so it'd be, it'd be a little expensive, but they come every month and service them. So if it needs freon, there's no charge on it. And every part that might be broke, if it breaks down, you can get a 15% off what the part costs. So, I mean, we do it on my other houses. I do that just because the maintenance of that usually keeps the unit up and running versus it, I mean, the police department, though it runs, heat pump has to run all the time, you know, for it to run right. So, I told him I talked to y'all tonight and maybe get some more paper on that. So, you know, Eric went in the day when I talked to him, was on the phone, I talked to the tech, but he didn't know too much about the service plan. So, I'll give him tomorrow.
That's what he, I think it would, I mean, if you, he gets some kind of documentation and if you get that, he gives that to you, then it will tell us, it should tell us what that...
Yes, yeah, he, the tech today, he said, "I don't know exactly what it is, but each, this will be cheaper." You know, the first will be $150 to save, the next ones will step down, be cheaper because you got three, three units on it. But it is a little more expensive like this building had three AC units on it.
But would that cover the entire, everything for the town? Would he check everything?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I understand, I'm going to find out more about that, to make sure.
I want to check with them because we have that same service and it's a yearly, not a monthly. They come out and check our air and then they come back and check our heat.
They come and spray me the service air, make sure the air's up.
So it may be yearly.
It may be, it's, I'm going to talk...
The air is yearly.
Yeah, I'm going to talk to Eric tomorrow. I talked to Cody, then the tech came out, he's, or the new wheels over. I'm going to talk to him tomorrow about that. I run, checked every day on the, on the storm unit and the shelter. All of our stuff's still in date. We run the generator today, ran fine, so. He come out last week and got all the heater blocking, they fixed up from that fire we had a couple months ago. It's just, which, what it cost us about $2,500 bucks, him rebuilding that wiring harness for us. But that's a weird heat pump on the things. So he had, had come out from Canada to get it. So, we finally get it right now, we got no alarms on it, so he's supposed to be getting us the bill on that. It was like $700 to build the, originally to rebuild the wiring harness. And then, then we found the heat pump was burned up, that's what really caused the fire. And then we had a couple of things that it burned up when it caught it on fire. So, he, he's supposed to get back with me this week with a final bill on all that.
Okay.
I gave y'all a paper tonight that has down our September deposits. And as you can see, we went up a little bit in September than what we were in August. I think Labor Day helped us. We had a very good deposit the first two weeks of September. I still have 14 long-term campers right now. Two pulled out this past weekend and then two others pull in, but they're just staying the last of this month and all of November. There may be one or two more pull out. But then we have people come in, you know, over the weekend. And I thank Trent for working for me when I need to be off to go see grandbabies. He does a good job and everybody brags on how friendly he is. I mean, we haven't seen that yet, have we, Andrew? But he's a good old boy, he does good. I wanted to show you that good things are happening over there. This was made for the campground from the Boy Scout troop in Auburn. We've had four Boy Scout troops and we're getting a lot of business from dismal gardens. Everybody's wanting to go see the dismal's. And from the way I hear, they don't have very good camp, camping spots. They have cabins and things, but they don't have very good camp spots. So as of right now, I've got three ladies over there in motor homes that came to go see the dismal this weekend. One is from San Bernardino, California, Michigan, and another lady's from Mississippi. And the lady from San Bernardino, this is her first book. She has written six books and is going to start her seventh. And she just enjoyed the campground and of course she signed up for me. But how people find us, y'all, it's amazing. And to hear stories and the people that we get to meet. And of course, everybody brags on how beautiful our campground is, you know, and how they don't understand why we're not fuller than we are. And, but it's there and it's beautiful and some of the other campgrounds have closed down. You know, they've already closed down for the fall and the winter. They weren't not going to open back up till March. So, I think we've got a good service for them. Again, I'd like to have a sign made since the state is not going to give us a nice one because they don't do that no more because everybody else has got one, was under the other law and now there's new laws and regulations. And so, you know, I was thinking about that excavating guy up there that's got those up close to his dad's house. You know, maybe, you know, we could find one of those, just to get one that you turn off the road. Because the lady from California said it was hard for her to find the way to get there and she found Trent up at the service station and a state trooper and they helped her get over there. Another thing I'm finding is people are turning on the gas heaters. We lit the heaters because, you know, we had 40 degree temperature. And so I'm really having to go around and check that. Or maybe I should put a sign up and say, "If you turn the heater on, turn it back to pilot light before leaving." When it starts getting a little bit colder, we do have those panels we're going to put up there on the bathhouses to keep the cold air from coming on in while they got the heaters on. But I'm really having to watch that because there are legion heaters on. Some people two brick, some people one brick. And then I go back the next days when I'm checking them and turn them down just to pilot light. So they are using the heaters now for their two. But good things are going on at the campground. I wish I could say we've got a full campground. We don't, but it's the weather like it is. I've talked to the BCD, BCD guys when they come around to aggravate and, you know, they talk about all the other campgrounds are slow right now too. Shannon brought us the new permits and he talked to me that, you know, it's just a slow season right now. So if we can hang on to the 14 that we have and keep them happy and Andrew and him come over and blew some stuff, we're going to try to start early cleanup a little bit. And here come the rain, which thank God for the rain. But they were going to burn up some stuff and then get ready for another leaf fall, but was going to try to keep ahead of it. So, just know there's things going on over there at the campground.
I know Trenton had asked me, that some people had asked him over the weekend about a larger, what was it?
Just some wood, selling bundles of wood and propane refiller. He screws on the big bottles and refills the small bottles.
Okay. So, I mean, that might be something.
Jimmy and I seen at a lot of the service stations that we went toward Georgia, that there is bags of wood, they're selling for like $5 a bag. And of course, where I've seen has been out of state and the forestry department rocks signs and put all over the campground. They don't want out of state wood coming in because it's got beetles and bugs and stuff like that. It can infest our forest. So, we'll have to try to find a distributor in Alabama that does that, just to maybe have some bundles. But Jimmy and I and everybody else, my little partner over there, he goes around with me when limbs fall or when we see dead little trees that my little saw will cut. And we do a community wood pile right there as you go around the corner. And I mean, every weekend that pile's been emptied and we have to start all over again and have some in there. But I do make them aware that there is some wood. They're mostly pine, but they do have wood to burn if they're mine, they got to get it.
We can maybe talk with Keith, while they're, they're cut off on there, they have small square pine, pine board, but they have outs of it that we've got in the past for when we've been on camping trips. So we might could talk to them and I tell them they just want you to come get it. And same way with ANH, we're working, they have a ton of cut off waste that we can both get. They would care for us to just go get it in a truck. You know, just something like that, maybe.
That would be good. Yeah, we just need to try and figure out some way of marketing. And once we get our budget, we get, with this new account, it gets finished with the audit and everything and we're able to set a budget, maybe we can work in marketing some for the campground and then work on the design.
There's some of that building, a little wooden chair or something like that.
Yeah, that would be nice. Alright, that sounds good. Next is, nothing, no changes, no nothing, no places, nothing exciting going on. Alright, the water department is, just everything's running is normal? I know that we've had some luck trending with the water loss going down. We're having good, good luck with that. So, things apparently calm with the police department, so...
We are chasing a water leak, so if anybody sees one, let us know. It happened Friday night and we can't find it.
Good. It would be hard to spot, always raining on them.
Yeah. They rode all morning before the rain started. And it's on the building, it's me...
It's on the town's later. I would assume it'd be somewhere downtown. Nobody, or Tyson's called in low pressure or anything.
Nobody's calling in low pressure.
Maybe it'll show up for long, I hope so.
Okay, I did send it away, okay. Oh yeah, it is a 13th because it's in something. Okay. Alright. Now that's some paid Christmas parade. But they did set a date for the, next on the agenda is the date for the trunk retreat that will be at Twin Forks and it will be at the softball field, that area right in there, correct? I think that's what Danielle said. In the parking lot. And if anyone's interested in having something in that, they need to contact Danielle and I can get you her number or you can contact her through Facebook Messenger or send her a message on her page. But that is set for October the 31st, Halloween night and I think it's...
So is the campground, you know, you had talked about having something and having a hayride through there. Do you want us to just do a trick or trunk and put it Twin Forks campground?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Or City of Bear Creek and get involved with them that way?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that, yeah, we could do something with the campground. It's from 6 to 8 on the 31st. Yeah, I think that would be good and, you know, and even, I know probably Joey, whoever's on, Kyle and I, they'll patrol that area. But yeah, I think it'd be nice to have something as far as the town goes, to have something. I will be here, of course, Joanna will be in Houston at that time going back for his test. But I will miss the fun, but y'all have enough fun for us both. And next on the agenda is the Christmas parade date and it's been set for December the 13th. And I'm not sure of the time yet. What time do we usually start?
6.
Six, okay. So, and that's on Friday the thirteenth. And we'll have, we'll light the Christmas tree and everything afterwards. And we'll have the refreshments like we did before and it'll be at the municipal building. We'll do just like we did last year. And then Santa will be up here and, uh, I'm trying to find Santa. It's a nice chair, so he can have his pictures made at the civic angle. I'm going to get with. But, uh, but he will be here. Once the parade's finished, then he'll come up here. But I, but I want to ask him to be there when we light the Christmas tree and the kids are there and then they'll must be way up here.
I'd like to comment to you on how good the downtown looks and all the hard work you and the boys done decorating downtown. It looked really good and invested.
You got us motivated.
Got it.
And thank you, but let me use your stuff. Now, we were excited, the guys got up there and hit, well, we got it done pretty quick. Was really proud of it. Alright. I guess that's about, it's, it's a short meeting, but everything's, there hasn't been a lot of changes. So I'm just kind of working through everything and hopefully, um, have answers to a lot of stuff in this council meeting.
Make a motion, Adrian.
All in favor?
None of those.